Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 9th meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Luise.
Present.
Trustee Leo.
Present.
Trustee Alfassi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. I have one appointment to make tonight, and that is, I'm very happy that I'm going to be making the appointment of Mary Ann Genitis, as member of the library board, to fill the unexpired term of Christine Ferrante with a term which will expire on April 1, 2019. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I want to thank Mary Ann very much. Mary Ann is our former trustee, Steve Quigley's widow, and we're very, very pleased that she's going to join the library board. She'll be a great asset there.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. We have one presentation tonight, and it's always a great presentation, and it's a presentation from our very beloved Community Fund, which is, we mention all the time, the Community Fund is a wonderful organization that sponsors things that are here in Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville. So we say all the time, if you're going to contribute, rather than contributing to an organization that's on a national level, always think about the Community Fund, which is on a very local level. So I see Melinda Burgess here. I'm not sure if she's going to, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And trustees. Thank you very much for having Melinda and myself. By way of background, my name is Doug Meyer, and I'm a resident of Bronxville, where I've lived for the past nine years. And I've had the privilege of serving as a board member of the Community Fund at Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe for the last four years. First as an evaluator of an agency, for the next two years as campaign co-chair, and currently I have the privilege of serving as the president of the Community Fund. Thank you very much for having us. The reason we wanted to come tonight is to just let everybody know that we are in the process of kicking off our annual campaign, which is where we raise money that will eventually get reallocated to roughly 25 agencies in the Bronxville, Tuckahoe, and Eastchester communities. This year, our goal is to raise $525,000, which will be a little bit north of our fundraiser last year, which was $515,000. And as many of you may know, a big chunk of that fundraiser comes right here to Tuckahoe and to this building. We allocate quite a bit to the Andrus Early Learning Center to help roughly 17 Head Start kids get a few extra hours of care and a hot meal. We support the youth programs of the police department, the Tuckahoe Trolley, and also make a significant contribution to the Eastchester Community Action Program just down the street. So we're just here to ask everybody to please contribute, again, on a local level, and we very much appreciate everybody's support. Thank you very much, and we can certainly answer questions if that's appropriate.
Well, thank you for coming, and like I said, it's nice that you come every year. We always enjoy watching that thermometer, seeing the mercury rise on that thermometer on these signs.
We like that, too.
All around. And I guess you put those signs up in Bronxville, too?
We do.
Is there one by the hospital, I think? Okay. Okay, wonderful, excellent, good.
On New Rochelle Road, right? Do we still do that one?
No, on White Plains Road.
Yes.
Well, we look forward to seeing it. Excellent choice in tie tonight, I see, too.
You, too.
Great. Thank you so much, and congratulations with your new role with the Community Fund.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have one public hearing tonight, and this is a public hearing to consider the proposed modifications to the village code regarding restaurants and fast food establishments. So do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. So this public hearing is now open, and I'm going to first turn it over to our village attorney, Gary Gertson, to kind of summarize what we're talking about here.
Sure. So a little bit of history, I remember a few months ago, the board asked myself and David to look into other local laws in other municipalities about fast food. So we found out Bronxville has prohibited fast food, and the way they did it was they defined fast food, and then what they did was they said, here's our laws, this is what can go in these certain districts, and fast food wasn't included. We also met, we met with Eastchester's council and also the planner for Eastchester. We had a long meeting with them and went over their law. And basically what they did was they defined fast food, and they went through and said, at the end of it, just said, we're outright prohibiting the fast food. So what we're proposing is basically a mirror image of Eastchester's law, and what I can do is go through and define what fast, how they define fast food and what they did up there. So what fast food is, is, I'll just go through, it's point by point. It's food that's intended to be prepared and served very quickly. Food is typically ordered at a stand-up counter, and there is a minimal or no table service. Payment is typically made prior to consumption. The menu is typically posted over the counter as a wall display, and the menu selections are general consistent at every location. Food is typically preheated or precooked and kept hot or reheated to order, burgers, fries, burritos, tacos, pizza, and pasta, or is set behind a counter visible to the customer for immediate assembly. Food is typically served to the customer in a packaged form for takeout, although tables may be provided for consumption on premises, and plates, cups, utensils are typically disposable. Now, the key here is what Eastchester did was said, if there are seven more locations with the same name, trademark, which you'd think of, you know, your typical fast food, which would fall into that category, and those are the things that are prohibited. So not only is it fast food, it's fast food that basically is a franchise, the franchise is out there with seven or more locations, and that's what they prohibited, and that's what the law that I think that we have proposed tonight.
So I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, and I'm going to call out brand names, because that's what people can relate to. So I'm not specifically saying that I like or dislike these brand names, but, you know, I just want to kind of go back and forth a little bit. So if, if, let's say there is a new establishment that's going to open up, and it's owned by me, one establishment.
Correct.
And it's Steve's Diner, that's permitted.
That would be permitted.
Right. That's permitted. I don't have seven or more locations.
That's right.
So you kind of look at the seven or more locations. But if McDonald's wanted to open up, no, because McDonald's has seven, the brand, the trade name has seven or more locations.
That's correct, yeah. It would fall into all these categories, and it would have seven or more locations.
So let's say Denny's, which has seven or more locations, but it doesn't fit the bill that's described here of stand-up counter. Would a Denny's, which is a diner that has more than seven locations?
A Denny's, according to this law, would be acceptable, would be able to go into the.
Denny's, and IHOP, and Applebee's, Ruth Chris Steakhouse, these are all more than seven locations, and they would fit, because they're sit-down restaurants. Basically, we're not banning a sit-down restaurant, it's the stand-up and.
That's correct.
That have more than seven locations. Okay.
That would be correct.
And the Subway that actually is going to be opening up, that would have fallen into this category where they would not have been able to open up.
That's correct, but since they've started work and they're through the process, this would not, this law would not affect them.
Right, okay. I can say that one of the thought processes that we've had all along is, since Eastchester has this in place, and since Tuckahoe shares its border with the town of Eastchester, actually we have quite a few properties on Marbledale Road, which is really the last area of any open land, although the hotel's looking at developing a good portion of it, but that would probably be the one section that I could see a restaurant maybe coming into play. And some of the properties on Marbledale Road share, actually, half of the properties in Eastchester and half is in Tuckahoe. So that makes it kind of challenging if you do have two very different zoning codes that apply towards the type of restaurants that could open there. So that was one of, I'll speak for myself, that was one of the thought processes that I had. So it's, we're going to keep this open, but I want to throw it to any of my colleagues on the board here, if anybody wants to talk about this.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say, we've been talking about this for quite a while.
We have.
As a board. We've encouraged folks, and we still encourage folks, to come out and certainly say their piece and give us their opinions of this new statute that we're looking to put in place. So I'm just glad that it's here, and we're moving forward, and we're making progress on it.
Yes. Sir, anybody from the public who would like to talk about this? Yes, sir?
Anthony Fiori, Pre-Medland Place. Can it be like a limit on what type of businesses open up of the same one?
Well, I.
Like, like right now, say that there's four pizzerias there, and one's going to open up. Could be a cap, like no more after that?
No, that.
Well, that's not proposed, that's not proposed in our law, but I don't know if the board would be inclined to say, well, if they only have a certain pizza place within a certain amount of feet of another pizza place, I don't know. That would be up to the board.
There are ordinances, there are ordinances like that, not here in Tuckahoe, but, you know, I would defer to council, and that, to answer that question, Anthony, would take a lot of research and a lot of time and effort to really do a thorough research of that.
Because that's, it's okay, but more of the same thing, like you need something different, put something different in the village?
Mr. Fiori, you bring me back to my comments of a few months ago about the nail salons. The proliferation of nail salons in Tuckahoe in a three-square-block area is pretty amazing, isn't it? Probably six, if my memory serves me well.
It's like here, one, two, three, there'll be another one right here.
But, but my point at that time, it was part of my remarks at that time, was it's free enterprise, so may the best business establishment win, was my thought process. I mean, yes, how many pizza establishments will this area be able to sustain? That's up to the individual. I mean, if somebody wants to come here, if a business owner wants to come here and open up another nail salon, you know.
Now, I just brought that up, because in case this hotel does open, just in case somebody wants to go to Domino's Express or Pizza Hut.
That wouldn't be allowed.
Wouldn't be allowed, right?
More than seven locations, stand-up.
Okay. Yeah, that was it. Hey, thanks.
Give up.
Mr. Mayor, I think Pizza Hut might be allowed, because that's sit-down where you'd have service, waiter and waitress service. So that would not fall into there, but the Domino's would not be allowed.
Right, okay. And yeah, I guess the best pizza parlor wins.
That's my motto.
Yeah. Anybody else from the public like to?
Hi, my name is Helen Kelleher. I live on Ridge Street in Eastchester, right down the block, up the block from the Cottle School, the Tuckahoe Middle and High School. And I'm very opposed to fast food. Thank God, we do not allow fast food in Eastchester. I don't know how Dunkin' Donuts got in, or Starbucks, for that matter, in Bronxville and the North End. It is the worst thing that ever happened. And as a matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago, I saw two fellows from the high school coming down Ridge Street, and they must have gone to a diner, not a diner, one of the delis on Route 22. And they were eating as they were going back from lunch. And the next day, I was walking up to the mailbox on Ridge and Stebbins. Now, I'm not saying they did it, but there were styrofoam containers from a deli on my neighbor's lawn, and they keep a meticulous lawn. Now, also, catty-cornered to me, is another beautiful lawn, and the other day, I, in fact, I think it was on the evening of Halloween or the next day, I found a Poland Spring water bottle and some kind of a sandwich underneath their bushes. I mean, and I want to add that one time, I ride my bike around the neighborhood, and I ride around the high school, and one time, I even found garbage from Wendy's. Now, you know as well as I do, Wendy's is all the way over on Central Avenue. And also, when there's games going on at the fields, either the high school or the Cottle Field, a couple, a few weeks ago, I was walking around, and I saw so many deposit bottles of garbage. I wrote a note and put it on the fence at the Cottle School, "Keep at Eastchester beautiful, don't litter." And then the next day, it was cleaned up. It was from some game that they were having. But also, at any given time, if you go down Main Street in Tuckahoe, whether you're on your way over to Central Avenue or to get onto the Bronx River Parkway, Main Street, Tuckahoe, is very congested. I can just imagine what it's going to be like when the new luxury apartments come in. I mean, you know yourselves, it's gotten very congested. And another thing I want to add is these new Smart Wheels that the teenagers are riding on, on Columbus Day. Now, we have a holiday coming up this week. On Columbus Day, there were seven middle school children from Tuckahoe riding those down Ridge Street, and they don't wear helmets. It's just an accident waiting to happen. One of my neighbor's sons has a motorized scooter, you know, one of those skateboards. He came around the corner the other day, up North Road, and spun onto Ridge Street, going north. Had I been a little further down, I would have taken him out. I go slow on Ridge Street, but something has to be done about those Smart Wheel things, because they're just an accident waiting to happen, and I fear for the teenagers. And these are children, you know, they're somebody's children. And even tonight, oh, well, this afternoon, as it was getting dark, there was a boy riding one of those. But I could just see them going to Subway and riding along Main Street, and I don't care where you go, whether it's Tuckahoe, Maranick, you see those children everywhere. And they should be wearing helmets, I think, no? I mean, they're motorized, and I fear for these children, and I fear for the driver that's going to hit them. One day, a girl was recently coming down, there were two teenage girls, came down North Road, one turned right onto Ridge Street and stayed on the right side, the other one went clear around onto the left side, and a car was coming down the hill. It's very dangerous, and I could just see them going to Subway, crossing the street. It's dark in that area, and that's why I'm very opposed to fast food coming in.
You covered a lot of ground. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address this topic? We are going to keep it open. Anybody, any of the other board members? We're going to definitely keep this public hearing open. So with that, do I have a motion to keep the public hearing open?
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
The only discussion I'm going to say is I would please urge anybody who can't make it to our meeting to, you can send an email, you can send a letter, address it to the village clerk, and she will make sure that we get a copy of it, if anybody wants to weigh in on this, who can't make it to our meeting. That's going to bring us to the adoption of minutes, the approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of October 5th, 2015. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
Stayed.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Do we have any correspondences this month? We do not. That's going to bring us to the first opportunity to address this board on anything that's in this agenda tonight. And there being no comments from the public, we're going to move on to resolutions. First is resolution number one, authorizing the renewal of limited cabaret license for the following establishments: Growler's Beer Bistro, Angelina's of Tuckahoe, The Broken Bow Brewery, Stevens Green, The Quarry Restaurant, Tucked Away Restaurant, and this is all for a period of one year from November 1, 2015, to October 31, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is ratifying the use of the Tuckahoe Trolley to pick up Girl Scouts at the Girl Scout Cabin on Highland Avenue and bring them to the fountains on October 27, 2015, from 4 to 5 o'clock. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
Favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is requesting the use of the trolley by the Eastchester Middle School on Monday, December 21, 2015, and Tuesday, December 22, 2015. The trolley will pick up students at 9:40 in the morning at the Eastchester Middle School and drop them off at the General Sir Pope Building, with a return trip pickup at 1:00 at the General Sir Pope Building and drop off back at the middle school. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And as everyone knows, my favorite thing is approving a, Resolution Four, approving a tax tertiary settlement for the Marble Masonic Historical Society, AKA, which is also known as the Huguenot Lodge, number 46F and AM, Section 33, Block 8, Lot 12, for assessment years 2009 through 2013, in the staggering amount of $20,075.48. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Fortunately, there's only one of these paybacks on tonight's agenda.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing the mayor or the village administrator to sign a natural gas sales agreement with Utility Expense Reduction LLC for a one-year period from January 2016 to January 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We're going to save a little money on this one, too, according to our building inspector. Thank you, Bill, for doing the research on that.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number six is to accept and award the following high bids for police department's surplus equipment, which were advertised through legal notice and available for auction on eBay from October 12 through October 22 of 2015. We sold a 2012 Dodge Charger, it was awarded to Brejack LLC of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, for $13,500. That's great. Kestrel 2000 SCI 26-inch bicycle, awarded to Brian Hite, H-I-T-E, of Avon, Connecticut, for $342. That must be some bicycle. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number seven is establishing the following as standard workdays for elected and appointed officials. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby establishes the following as standard workdays for elected and appointed officials, and will report the following days' work to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the village clerk. The standard workday in reporting for the court clerk, mayor, and assistant court clerk is a seven-hour day. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number eight is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $636,523.38. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's going to bring us to the discussion portion of our meeting. And tonight, what we're going to talk about is something we've been talking about for a while now, which is a policy for the Tuckahoe Community Event Boards. So I'm going to put this up, I'm not sure if the calendar or the camera guy there can kind of zone in on this. That's good. Okay, so if everybody can see this, what we, there's been an issue for a long time, which is, we'll call it banner litter all throughout the village. A lot of organizations get permission, they've been getting permission for years, to put banners on the, lots of locations, the Main Street Park fence, the Lake Avenue fence down by the Tuckahoe Train Station, the fence up by the Crestwood Train Station, and I guess that's pretty much it. Those are the village property locations. So we've decided that what we want to do is control the look and the location of where these signs are going to be. So, okay, everyone's seen that now. Thank you. So what we've decided is to actually have two of these community boards, stations, maybe we'll call them manufactured. We're going to have one up at the Crestwood Train Station, it'll be positioned right in front of the fence by the Metro North tracks, the other's going to be right in front of the Lake Avenue parking lot fence. And this board will allow us to go ahead and snap in two 4x4 advertisements. So these advertisements are going to come from, I know right now, out on the fence is an advertisement for the spaghetti dinner that it just went to. So next year, the Knights of Columbus will actually fill out an application form in advance. They'll have to have a 4x4 sign made, they'll have to deliver it to the Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works staff will be the ones who will actually put the sign in this display case. It'll be there for a predetermined amount of days leading up to the day of the event, and then Department of Public Works will take it down the very next day, and the Knights of Columbus can come and retrieve their sign within 10 days or whatever it is afterwards. So the concept here is to, to really take control, to make sure that we're giving a kind of a fair shake to all the different groups who want to go ahead and put their signs up, and just kind of keep, keep some control over this. It's going to be uniform, it's going to look very nice, the board looks great, though we know that there's going to be times when there's not going to be any signs there, so we're going to have some signs made up that'll talk about some of Tuckahoe's events, whether it be Winter Fest, which Mr. Glusie's going to talk about tonight, which is why he's here, it could be the Easter egg hunt, or it could be, you know, some other Tuckahoe community event. So that's something that, I guess I've talked about it, I know it's a discussion point, but maybe I've kind of overshadowed the whole conversation on it. So it's discussion. Any other board members want to weigh in on this?
I think it's a good step of progress, listening to the concerns of our residents, and also I think it allows for publication of events without, and keeping it in a way that's orderly and neat and looks good for the village. I guess my only question would be if we do have that time of year where there's more than two events, or how do we handle, is it first come, first served? Is there any way to?
I think that's a question that, see, I'm putting David on the spot now, right? I think that's a question that... See, I'm putting David on the spot now, right? You know, we were thinking it's a first come, first served. Since we have four spots... I don't think we've ever had more than four, but since we have two on this sign, on this community event board, which will be in Tuckahoe, and then there's going to be two up in Crestwood, we do have an available space for four. And I don't think we get really four things going on a one particular weekend. So it may be where if, let's say there was three events going on next weekend, those three events would take up three spots out of the four that we have, and then it's going to come down right away, and then the following weekend's events would go up in here. So one of the things it's going to do, too, is going to... We're going to be kind of taking control over the duration of time, that somebody's going to get their free marketing and advertising time in... at this board, so. But we're still working on the... David, I know, has crafted a draft of the actual policy, so I'll let him talk about the policy.
Yeah, just something else in regards to that is that in the policy itself, obviously it's still in draft form, it's up to the Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees to adopt, but it asks for an application one month prior. And it also says that nonprofits have preferential treatment. So what we'll do is, one month prior to any week that someone wants to put up there, we'll make the decision, the clerk's office in consultation with my office, and if we need to go to the Board of Trustees, what we can do is we can limit it to just one of the signs if there's multiple events for that week. But for the most part, we think that just the two spaces is going to be fine. And obviously, there might be some, you know, growing pains with this, but I think for the most part, we're going to be able to handle it within the administration of the village.
Good.
Thanks. So with that, we're going to now move over to the departmental reports to the board. As always, we're going to start with our chief of police, John Costanza. And I want to congratulate him. He was honored this past weekend.
Thank you, Mayor. It was quite an honor. I was honored by the Jerry DeSantis Memorial Foundation, and to be honored in someone who I held in such high esteem and who I had so much admiration and respect for. Jerry DeSantis was a school teacher up at Tucko School District for many years. He taught history. He coached several different sports. He was an icon in the community, and he passed away a little over three years ago. And I had known Coach DeSantis for some time and never knew that he was a Vietnam War hero, was well decorated for his actions in the Vietnam War, and he was just a very humble man, and he was a great asset to this community, and certainly missed, and to be honored in his name was certainly a humbling experience for me. I just have a couple of announcements. Good news, once again, on October 15, the AAA awarded Tucko another gold award. This is 11 consecutive years that the village has been honored for their traffic safety efforts. So I commend the men and women of the police department for all their hard work in putting these programs together and for keeping our village traffic safety as a priority and keeping them safe, as well as another award that we received was 41 consecutive years without a pedestrian fatality, and that's only second to one community in a district that covers, I think, from Columbia County down through New York City and all municipalities of Long Island. So it's quite an accomplishment.
Wow, that's pretty good.
Yesterday, Sunday morning, the Emmanuel AME Church held a service honoring the police and fire department, the Tucko Police Department and Eastchester Fire Department. And I just want to thank Reverend Dr. Linda Hill, the pastor, and all the congregants of the church. It's a small church. It's very genuine, though, and they were so hospital to us, and the fellowship was very much appreciated. So just want to thank Reverend Hill and the entire church for their recognition of the police department. And that's all I have for this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you. I see we have Mr. Glusy in the back. I'm sure he has a lot to talk to us about. Winter Fest, Winter Fest.
Winter Fest. You'd like me to start, Winter Fest?
Oh, no, you can start with whatever you want.
I just wanted to remind some of the teenagers out there that we do have open gym this winter, fall into winter, and the hours are from 3:00 to 4:00, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So if you'd like to come out and play some ball, or use the basketball court for dodgeball sometimes, come on out and enjoy the community center. The residents' community meeting, next Wednesday, the 18th, at 7:00 p.m. at the community center. Come on out and sit around with us and say hello, introduce yourself, and let us know how we can help you, assist you, and make things better for you in the village. Saturday, the 21st, is a Westchester Collectibles show from 9:00 to 5:00 in the community center, comic book show, which features memorabilia, comic books, and novelty toy vendors. So if you're interested in that, it does get a good crowd. Last year, we had quite a bit of participation for the Westchester Collectible and Comic Book Show. It's 21st from 9:00 to 5:00 at the community center. Of course, Winter Fest coming up in December, Saturday, the 5th, and Sunday, the 6th, in Depot Square, brought to you by the Village of Tuckahoe and solely sponsored by the General Sopope Foundation. On the 5th, we begin at 5:00, from 5:00 to 8:00, with a DJ and some caroling by the tree lighting. The tree lighting's at 6:00 p.m., which will also involve Santa coming in on the fire engine. So caroling by the tree, tree lighting, Santa rides in on the fire engine. Should be very nice. Ice skating, so bring your skates. We have a synthetic ice rink out there in Depot Square, and of course, some food vendors will be available for you as well. We continue on the next day in Depot Square from noon to 5:00 p.m., which is Sunday, the 6th, and we encourage you to come out with your families. There will be pictures with Santa inside the General Sopope Foundation from 12:00 noon to 5:00 p.m. Bring your iPhones and Samsungs and take a shot, and bring your kitties in there with a picture with Santa from 12:00 to 5:00, inside the General Sopope Foundation. That's Sunday. We'll feature some entertainment that day outside in front of the General Sopope Foundation, the Bobby B Quartet from 1:00 to 3:00. Also, a big fan favorite that day will be the Hay Ride, and that's from 1:00 to 4:00, outside in Depot Square, the Hay Ride. So make yourself available. It's going to be a winter wonderland weekend there for Winter Fest, December 5th and 6th here in the Village of Tucko. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's going to be a great weekend. Let's hope for good weather. We've had good weather for a long time, too. Gary, anything for us, though? Save it, anything?
Sure, I'll give a couple of quick updates. One, the Crestwood area, we haven't seen a lot of work being done down there, but this week, weather permitting, we'll see some milling and hopefully some paving by the end of this week. Obviously, weather permitting, I know there was some rain in the forecast, so that's good, that that's kind of moving along. In regards to DPW, I know that we've had great weather, but the leaves are coming down quite fast, and I just want to remind the residents that it's much easier for DPW to pick up leaf piles if they're in kind of long windrows and not just one pile. Don't put them directly in the road. There's a lot of parking situations that are... It's causing a little bit of a problem. So long windrows, try to free of any debris. It's really important. A lot of the debris can kick up, hit some of the guys in the face. It's really important to damage our trucks, which is also something that we look out for. So the residents can help us with that. It'll just make the program go so much smoother. Couple of good pieces of news. I reported about six months ago that we looked at our workers' comp rates from two years ago, the 13-14 year, and we got some favorable credits in the amount of $85,000. We spent a lot of time in the last couple of months looking over our 14-15 year, and we've received credits in the amount of $135,000. So this is something that I... A lot of department heads, myself, have spent a lot of time doing over the last six to eight months, but we're starting to see a lot of benefits. So it's really a good thing. And word from Amy Pollan's office this week that we received a $15,000 grant towards our Main Street Park improvements, which will be happening in the spring. So that's, you know, that's... It'll help out that project quite a bit.
That's great. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. David, do you have any information, and I'm sorry to hit you, you know, I'm prepared, but about the hotel tax? Should we, you know, have that hotel? Hopefully, we'll get that hotel tax. Do you have any information about that?
The last thing I've heard about that hotel tax, and I believe I've told the board members this, is that the governor has called for those bills to be sent to his office. At that point, he can either sign them, decline them, or hold out for a certain number of days, and they automatically pass. What the Assembly doesn't want to do is they don't want to send those bills up because they worry that he's going to veto those bills. So obviously, there's some... Something in Albany happening right now where the governor is telegraphing to the Assembly that he's going to veto these bills if and when they send it to his desks. So I believe there is something going on up there, where the Assembly is still trying to work their Albany magic to have him sign those bills when they eventually go up there.
Sounds like a little Albany horse trading to me.
Yes.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm sure our state representatives are singing our song. I know they have supported this tax for us, so hopefully, they're going to twist arms like they should.
Well, we certainly need it, and I know the governor lives in Westchester. I don't think he catches our local cable channel, but if he knew how badly we needed it, I'm sure he would do the right thing. And the right thing is to pass that hotel tax for the Village of Tucko, because we certainly will need it.
It's approximately $150,000 in tax revenue to our village.
Of tax revenue that comes from people who do not live in this municipality, for the most part, who are here visiting us and getting the benefit of our beautiful village. So, Governor, I do ask you very much to please consider that. Camille, anything?
Just a reminder that the clerk's office will be open at 7:30 p.m. for quick transactions before our next board meeting on December 14 at 7:30.
Wonderful. Thank you. Miscellaneous business, our next village board meeting is going to be on December 14, 2015. Village offices and DPW will be closed on Wednesday, November 11th, that's this Wednesday, as well as on Thanksgiving Day, November 26th. Village offices will be closed the day after Thanksgiving, but DPW is open the day after Thanksgiving. And the ever-popular County Mobile Shredder will be in the Fisher Avenue parking lot on December 12 from 10:00 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon. I want to thank our resident, Peter Costa, who is helpful, and he works for the county, and he's helpful in actually getting us slots in the schedule for the Mobile Shredder. Very helpful and very, very popular. As Mr. Glusy mentioned, Winter Fest is going to be on the 5th and 6th of December, and we invite everyone to come on down and enjoy a great weekend with your neighbors in Depot Square. So that's going to bring us to the Board of Trustees' member reports, and we're going to start with your deputy mayor, to my right, your left, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund.
Thank you.
Just wanted to update our community on upcoming meetings for the Planning and Zoning Board. The next planning board meeting will be on November 17 at 7:30 p.m. Some interesting items regarding new properties on the agenda. 109 Marble Dale Road, which is the ongoing review of the site plan for the hotel and proposed hotel and restaurant. There'll be continuing architectural review for 100 Main Street. 10 Fisher Avenue will expand its facility, application to expand its existing garage to a storage area and an employee lounge. 26 Columbus Avenue, which will be, as I understand it, a new pizza restaurant that's supposed to offer designer authentic pizza. And then the final item will be a site plan approval for 300B Columbus Avenue, which is going to be a new chocolate shop. And I don't think there can ever be too many of those in town. The zoning board, and the next zoning board meeting will be on the first Wednesday of December, on the 2nd, at 7:30 p.m. The agenda is yet to be determined. I just wanted to congratulate our own Sheila Markot on her reelection on November 3. She was once again elected for a new term as county legislator, and as we know, as a resident of Tuckahoe, she is an indy, fatigable advocate of our village, keeping our taxes low, and for good, beneficial, lean government. So I think that's great for our community and great for our county. I also wanted to congratulate Chief Costanzo on his recognition, also an icon in our village. So congratulations. That's it.
Thank you very much. Trustee Luizzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking all the merchants and organizations which advertised and donated so many wonderful gifts to the senior bazaar that was held on October 3, which was a tremendous success. So on behalf of the director, Jennifer Vetromile, we'd like to extend our grateful thanks to the Immaculate Conception and the Assumption Parish for providing the Tuckahoe seniors with the Father Hall space, which has really been a boon to the organization since they've moved there. The seniors have, coming up this month, is a presentation on November 12 by the Westchester End of Life Coalition. The presentation will be about the what, where, and when of hospice and palliative care. So it's a very interesting topic to our seniors, and Christina Strout, the president of this organization, will be presenting this discussion. The seniors will be having their annual Christmas party at the Davenport on Tuesday, December 8, and thanks to the generous contributions of Keller Williams Realty, it will be underwritten, and for the members that are in good standing, there will be no fee for this party. Just one last thing. I would just like to congratulate the varsity football team of the Tuckahoe Tigers for winning their fourth straight Section 1 title. They defeated their arch rivals, Haldane, 24-12 up at Pace University. They now move on to the regional finals, November 14, up at Sleepy Hollow, with an opponent from Section 9. So once again, congratulations to the Tuckahoe varsity football team and first-year coach, Tom Ettry, for a job well done. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Trustee Leo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Eastchester Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce will have a Santa stop, and it's on December 6 between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m., and that's located at the park across from Town Hall in Eastchester. The public... The Tuckahoe Public Library is participating in a Lord &amp; Taylor fundraising shopping event. You get to purchase a $5 ticket, which all the proceeds go to the Tuckahoe Public Library, and for that ticket, you receive two special 25% off coupons, 1 15% off savings pass if you use it at storewide, and extra bonuses applied when opening your Lord &amp; Taylor credit card. They also have a creative writing workshop, which is scheduled for Mondays, November 9th and 30th, between 1:00 and 2:00 p.m. Again, please call to register if you plan to attend. There are a adult coloring club at the Tuckahoe Library, which is the last Wednesday of each month at 11:00 a.m. We also have a series called Norman Rockwell's America, The Westchester Years, and that is on Thursday, November 12 at 1:30 p.m. Please call to register. And also, we have a local author, Terry Brennan. He will be at the library on Wednesday, December 2 at 7:00 p.m. to discuss his new book, The Aleppo Code, and registration is required, so please call the library if you plan to attend. The also... We also... The library also has Legos in the library. Come and play with Legos on Friday, November 13 at 4:00 p.m., and it's open to kids from ages 5 to 10. And again, registration is required. And finally, come and learn a little Spanish while having fun, and that's on Mondays, November 16 at 11:30 a.m., and it's open to children from birth to five years. And again, registration is required. And I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to pass it now on to Trustee Alfassi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to report that we, in our Thursday meeting, which is our working... Work session meeting, we were there from 7:00 till 11:00 p.m., and that's actually the norm. A lot of people don't know that, but we're there and we hash out what's going on in the village. And one of the things we did was we met on the zoning ordinances, the proposed changes to some of the zoning ordinances, and we will probably be scheduling a public hearing either next month or the month after?
Next month.
Next month, next month, on some of these issues. Some of them are, I think, we all were in accord. Some, we've massaged a little bit and come to some agreement, and some we decided not a good idea. And that's exactly the process we wanted to go through. And that's exactly the process we wanted to go through. So one of the things we're going to do is we're going to have a new floor area ratio ordinance regarding one-family homes. I think that'll provide some relief to some of the one-family homeowners in being able to renovate their basements, and we'll be, we'll talk more about that in the future. One of them is also about fencing. It's an ordinance that many municipalities have, which is if you go ahead and put up a fence, the finished side of the fence must face your neighbor. So paint both sides. Another one we're talking about is chain link fencing, and I don't know that we've come to 100% consensus on that yet, but we're moving forward on that. Another one is a buffer zone. That one, I think, is probably going to take a bit more time. I don't know that it will be ready by next month. And in addition to that, another hot topic is off-street parking for residents. So these are all things that we're working on. A couple of these are going to come out of committee, so to speak, and put on for a public hearing scheduling, but we're making great progress.
Mayor, thank you for spearheading that, too. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you forgot to say that we were actually at our last Thursday night meeting, not this past one, before, until after midnight, I remember.
That's true, I know, yeah.
We get a lot of work done there, so happy about that. I'll be brief in my report tonight. I also want to congratulate our county legislator, Sheila Marcott. You know, nobody works harder at the county level, other than Rob Astorino, of course, for us than Sheila. She is just, you know, when she was village trustee and then a town councilwoman, you know, she proved to us on a local level what she can do, and she certainly does it for us on a county level. So the district that she happens to hold court on is definitely swayed a lot differently than she would like from her party registration, and I think it just goes to show that people did pay attention and they said, you know what, we're going to vote for the person, and they voted for the right person. They voted for Sheila this time, so she did a great job. We're very pleased about that. I received a memo from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and just to kind of summarize it, it says that the Brownfield Cleanup Program, which was done where the project is at 300 to 308 Columbus Avenue, which is where the old gas stations used to be, up in Crestwood. This is in the Marbledale Road Hotel Site. This is the other site where they built that new building there, that the site is now completely clean and it is done. So it's sort of their sign-off. It's finished. I also want to talk about, there is a small little area that DPW has been working on the last couple of days, and it's on Dante Avenue, so the Dante Avenue Extension. And currently, in this little park, we're going to call it a park for lack of a better word, a pocket park, I guess you could call it, there is a, there's been a memorial to our former village clerk, Susan Chimera, her husband who passed away many years ago. The residents up there, they actually contributed money to put a flagpole there, which is there, and a plaque memorial for her husband, who passed on years, many years ago. And in addition to that, in recent years, Sergeant Robert Murray, who is a Medal of Honor recipient, has also been honored, and we renamed that street, Dante Avenue Extension, in his honor. And he also has a marker there, too, a plaque and a small monument. So DPW was in there, actually, they were very aggressive and did a, quite a nice job there. We're going to take a hard look at it with the veterans and make sure that we do satisfy and accommodate both entities there, and that's something that I'm going to be doing with the veterans this Veterans Day. So it's kind of appropriate that it's actually being constructed this week. I want to give a little shout-out and thank you very much to Dennis LaCente, LaCente Landscaping. It's a Tuckahoe-based business. They are always there first and foremost to go ahead and help out. They've been helping out an awful lot on this project, and they do a lot of donate, silent, you know, they're kind of that company doesn't, you know, he's not down here patting himself on the back because he's a busy guy, but he's the first one to go ahead and say, you know what, what do you need? I'll send my guys over there, we'll send some plants over there. And he's been doing it for us this week. I know that next month, we're going to talk about the wonderful things that he's done for us in and around Depot Square in certain areas. So Dennis, I think part of the reason why we don't see him so much is he also purchased the Leeb's Nursery, which is in Norishell. It's a pretty big-sized nursery, and that keeps him busy. But he's a Tuckahoe guy, his family's been here for a long time, and, you know, I think it's appropriate that, I just wanted to publicly thank him because he does an awful lot for the village. So thank you, Dennis. With that, I just want to mention that, as everyone knows, November 11th, 11:00 in the morning, we know what that is, it's Veterans Day, and there is going to be a ceremony at Parkway Oval, which is where they normally hold it each year. So I invite anyone who is going to be around on Veterans Day, the 11th, to please come on down. Remember, it's very simple, 11-11-11-11. So with that, this gives us the second opportunity to address the board on anything at all that you would like to talk about. Yes, ma'am? Kara Gruber, I know it's Pollock, okay, because we went to high school together.
Good evening, Mayor Eklund and respected trustees of the village board. I am here tonight to announce that I am running for the position of Fire Commissioner in the Eastchester Fire District. Let me begin by telling everyone a little about myself. I am a lifelong resident of this community, born in the village of Bronxville, raised in the town of Eastchester, and presently reside in the village of Tuckahoe. I am a former court reporter, having worked in the Bronx District Attorney's Office prior to having my family. Both my sons attended and graduated from Tuckahoe schools, and I am proud to say that my eldest son is an Eastchester firefighter. I am also the grandmother of two. I was employed by the Eastchester Fire District, appointed in 1987 as the Assistant Secretary to the Board of Fire Commissioners. In 1996, I was formally appointed as the Secretary to the Board and Fire District Treasurer. In that capacity, I faithfully served the Fire District and the citizens of this community for 27 years. I am running for the position of Fire Commissioner because I believe that this current board lacks transparency, integrity, honesty, and fairness. As I review the $16 million Fire District budget, certain line items are concerning. For instance, the legal line in the 2015 budget was increased from $46,000 to $330,000, a whopping 614% increase year over year. A $750,000 tax anticipation note was secured, and for the first time in 40-plus years, the Fire District cannot state that it is debt-free. I question why the need to borrow when the Fire District consistently had a substantial fund balance. Sadly, the burden of this tan note will be borne by the taxpayers for many years to come. In addition, the Fire Board meetings are held primarily at the Village Hall in Bronxville. These meetings are videotaped, edited, and some may or may not appear on YouTube. To my knowledge, they are not shared with the Village of Tuckahoe or the town of Eastchester to be broadcast on their local cable channels. In the past, the board meetings were held in all three municipalities where they were televised live, then rebroadcast, keeping the citizens and taxpayers up to date on the current events of their Fire District. Again, this is the current practice, and if I'm elected, we'll bring the Fire District Board meetings back to all three municipalities to which the Fire District serves. In closing, once again, I thank you for this opportunity to address this council, and please vote for me. Kara M. Polero, on Tuesday, December 8th. Between the hours of 2:00 PM and 9:00 PM, Tuckahoe residents, please vote at the Tuckahoe Community Center. For voting locations, please call Fire Headquarters, and the number, well, you can try, is 914-793-6676 or 793-6888. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Well, thank you. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
And it's December 8th.
December 8th, 2:00 to 9:00, different locations. The Village of Tuckahoe residents vote at the community center right down the street.
So everyone in the Village of Tuckahoe?
Everyone in the Village of Tuckahoe.
They go to the community center.
Correct.
And it's 2:00 to?
2:00 to 9:00 PM.
2:00 to 9:00, okay.
Okay.
It's always amazing to me how few people come out to vote at that election.
They, you know, that's why we want to get some, you know, some knowledge out there. That's why I thought this was important to come tonight.
And that board is in control of a $16 million budget.
Correct.
And, which is a lot larger budget than this board is, yeah, manages, so.
It's a lot of money, so.
Yeah, please get out and vote, everyone. It's very important.
Yes, and thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any information on absentee ballots?
There are none. It had to be adopted by the board in, at an October meeting, and they declined to adopt that. Yeah, there's no absentee ballots.
They declined to?
To have them.
They give a reason why that's?
They just said no.
Wow, okay, interesting.
That's a question for the board.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would love to talk to us tonight? Okay, if not, if there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Until next time, Tuckahoe, have a very good evening.